Now, let's go ahead. We're good.
Who's Dean? Is he done?
No, no Dean. He just texted me. He's not able.
Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the October 22 special meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. And I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Yes, Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord is expected. Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bavacqua and Secretary Bavacqua is expected. Commissioner Clark Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Gosson.
Here.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Stone is expected.
Okay, so we have a forum. Before we get started, I want to go through this again. You've probably been reading in the paper, and this is as much for the members of the community who are watching, but virtual meetings such as this are now approved again under a different I mean, they're a different system at the state, but we can continue to meet virtually and the decisions made here, the action taken by the planning commission do count. They do count as though it was a regular meeting. We suspect now that'll go on for some time, maybe long into the future, but at any event, the meeting counts. Mr. Lord, good evening, sir. For those members of the public, you should see a phone number displayed at the bottom of the video screen here. You can call in on that number at any time and you'll be connected with Sienna Hall, our planning consultant here, and Sienna will, at the appropriate time, connect you to us. So you'll be able to speak directly and live to the planning commissioners regarding really whatever it is you wish that's on the agenda tonight. I'm going to change things slightly this week. I know during the pledge of allegiance, we get a lot of talk over and speak over. So I'm going to ask tonight that Eric Lord, our deputy planning chair, recite the pledge of allegiance and the rest of us will just stand back and watch. So Eric, whenever you're ready.
Be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lord. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This is a period of time for anyone from the public to speak on any item, preferably the items that are not on the agenda for later on. And I always ask Sienna, do you have anyone waiting to speak to us, or have you received any communication?
I have not received either.
Okay. Sienna, I had a letter sent to me directly by a member of the public over the last week or two. You have that letter in front of you?
I do not, but I can pull it up, actually.
I wanted to read it into the record. It's fairly lengthy and I can read it. I'll read it now if you don't mind.
Okay.
"Mr. McGee, it's dated October 10th. In a letter sent last week, I identified the project wrong. When I called to ask the name of the project, the person would not give me the name saying she didn't know. Are you kidding me? Once I identified myself as a Rochester Hills resident, she just stopped talking to me. She was very rude. Yesterday, I came into town and I saw the sign saying, 'No to the riverfront development down First Street,' and can't really understand their objection. I guess you're going to ban the off-street parking because the traffic will be a mess. If someone is parking in front of their house and two cars are trying to pass each other, it isn't going to be very safe. I'm so disgusted with the committee who even considered this project in the first place." And I can't read exactly what that line says. Talks about you're going to have a building every square inch with big buildings like the downtown houses by the police department. It's a great site, close to everything, but the arts and apples traffic is going to be mind-blowing along with the Christmas parade and the traffic with the Christmas lights. And this goes to the riverfront place traffic, which would be more than the seasonal traffic. I see the building Palazzolo already has been building big, the builder Palazzolo, excuse me. Big high analysis on postage stamp lots. They must be very sure that you would approve the project. Why else would they have spent so much money clearing up contaminated ground, redesigned the front of the buildings and eliminated one of the stories? More money spent on a maybe. This is just nuts, letting a builder change your quaint city because a high-end builder wants to lie in their pockets at the expense of residents who've lived there for many years. I've lived in Rochester for 43 years and have been through, seen so many changes. We had to change our name from Avon Township when everyone was trying to take bits and pieces of our township. Are you going to change the name of the city of Rochester to the city of Palazzolo? They certainly are investing huge amounts of money in your town and soon you might lose control of whatever open space you have left. It might be already too late. So very sad for your city. Signed, Carol Brewer." I just, she obviously was not pleased and I just wanted to read that into record. If anyone has a comment, that would be fine. Blaine and Nick, any claims in there about how she was handled by the staff? I'm sure you can handle that ably without our involvement in it. But anyway, that's for the record.
She might have been talking to Rochester Hills because nobody here is going to do that to her, number one. Number two, we don't have contaminated land that Palazzolo bought here. We've never had a Palazzolo approval in front of this body. They just build single-family homes. She's talking about the development in Rochester Hills, the sanctuary. So she sent it to the wrong city.
I got it. Okay. All right. Well, for the record, it's now on the record, so we will move on. The next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 5, 2020. I asked the commissioners if you've had the opportunity to review the minutes and do you have any changes, additions, deletions? And if not, we would entertain a motion to approve.
Removed.
Removed by the mayor. Do we have support?
Support.
Uh, who, Mr. Stone?
Good evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Can we have the roll call, please?
Bixson?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua here? Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gosson?
Yeah.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you very much. The next item is number five. Tonight is set, time is set for a public hearing for the request from Par Pharmaceutical to construct a modular storage facility adjacent to their existing warehouse for cold storage at their campus located at 870 Parkdale. Vidia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the city's request, I reviewed a proposal from Par Pharmaceutical Company to build a 2,280 square foot.
Vidia, your audio, your audio's not real solid.
Okay, let me just, can you hear me clearly now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. The site is located on the south side of Parkdale Road between Cedar Brook Senior Living and Pfizer Pharmaceuticals with a total site area of 71.18 acres and it is zoned RP, which is the research park district. The building is to be used as a warehouse area for shipping and receiving of the products. And the use is a principal use in the Army District by the zoning ordinance. The proposed addition is intended as cold storage warehouse for the production of COVID-19 vaccine under Operation Warp Speed. The proposed structure is a single-story structure. The building is located, I will share my screen to show the location of the building. So this little gray structure that you see here, that is the proposed addition. So it is located on the south side of southeast corner of the main warehouse building on the site and is entirely concealed from view of Parkdale, which is on the north side. With regard to vehicle access, the planning commission has over a period of last few years reviewed several small projects within this campus. There is a full network of roadways within this whole site. None of the major road network areas is going to be affected. The one concern we did have is this addition is greatly reducing this access drive that goes to the maintenance building and the cooling towers that are located over here. We did have an opportunity to consult with the fire chief and the fire chief said provided an access drive 12 feet in width is provided with the surface of compacted stone engineered to support the weight of a fire truck. It is acceptable. So when the addition is being made, it should be ensured that the width along this area is at least 12 feet. No changes are proposed to any of the pedestrian access patterns or sidewalks on the site. With regard to off-street parking, the proposed addition will require three additional parking spaces. One would be 100 for a warehouse use. Plan that is submitted at this time does not include any parking calculations. However, we have reviewed the site multiple times in the past and I pulled up prior records which indicate that this site has over 550 parking spaces, which are more than adequate to meet the need for all the buildings within this complex. With regard to architecture, the proposed building is going to look like a typical warehouse addition. It's metal panel walls in colors to match the existing building. The elevations do indicate rooftop mechanical units placed over here. However, the distance of these structures from Parkdale, the line of site diagram, these units will not be visible at all. Proposal does not include any signage at this time. With regard to lighting, the applicant has submitted manufacturer's touchy detail for downward directed and shielded wall pack fixtures. And now the location of these fixtures is not shown on the elevations, but we assume it's probably going to be one on this side, one on this side, possibly one on the east side, too. The plan does not involve the removal of any landscaping. As you can see, it's already an existing paved area where the addition is going in. No landscaping is being removed and none is proposed at this time. No changes are being proposed to any of the crash removal facilities on the site either. On the whole, this is a very small warehouse addition to the existing warehouse complex in order to facilitate the storing of vaccines and their shipment in regard to the current pandemic. All of the items of required information have been submitted at this time. It is our recommendation that the planning commission grant site plan approval for pharmaceuticals for the construction of the warehouse addition at 870 Parkdale, subject to the provision of a 12-foot wide access drive to the maintenance building and cooling towers on the southeast side of the addition as required by the fire chief. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the planner from the commissioners at this point? Any question? Now, is there a representative from Par with us tonight?
Yes, I believe.
Oh, this is here.
Who is here?
Brian Kistner.
Hi, Brian. Can you identify yourself?
I'm on mute.
Yeah, he's on mute, Brian.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Brian, your connection to this project?
I can try to do a vent trillicus thing if you'd like.
Brian, your audio needs to be raised. We don't hear you at all.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Got too many mute buttons happening here. So, my name is Brian Kistner. I'm the senior director of engineering services at Par Pharmaceutical here in Rochester. And I'm overseeing this project, this Warp Speed project, which just happened at a speed of light. So I appreciate the recommendation. I'll take any questions.
Can you elaborate just slightly about what this entails?
Yeah, this is a basically a refrigerated storage unit for 400 pallets as the COVID vaccine is produced into vials that needs to go into refrigerated storage between processes and before it shipped to, back to Operation Warp Speed.
So this is what we're reading about in the paper, the ultra-low temperature storage required for this product?
Yeah, it's, you know, it comes to us at minus 80 degrees C. And as we thaw the product to manufacture the product, then it has to be in a refrigerated storage from 2 to 8C.
Okay. Any questions for this gentleman? Are you able to say which of the vaccines this is?
We have signed and announced with a company called Novavax.
Okay, and they'd be the named producer of the vaccine?
Yeah.
Okay, and are they in stage three and all that?
Yeah, they're in stage three as well. So we'll be wrapped up in full production come December, January timeframe.
Okay, very good.
We're scaling up the process and it's happening fast.
Any questions? This is scheduled for a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing and we'll call it 7:15. And Sienna, I'm going to ask, do you have any communication live or otherwise from any members of the public regarding this proposed project?
There is no one that has raised their hand to speak, so I will go with no.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's Nick. I had a gentleman call from across the street, directly in front of the project. I explained it to him. We went over it today and he ended up being in support of the project. He lived, his backyard was on Parkdale, directly across, and he was happy that how the placement of the property was, the addition was being done.
Very good, very good. Anyone else? Okay, it's a short public hearing, but we'll call it held and close it at 7:16. Just a personal note, you might find this of interest, but I'm in one of the vaccine trials. I volunteered back last summer when it was published from Henry Ford in Detroit. This happens to be the Moderna National Institutes of Health vaccine, and I've already had two shots. I don't know if I got the placebo or got the vaccine, but I have to go down next, next week again for another follow-up. So just an interesting thing that I got involved in and kind of glad. Now that I see this happening down the street from me, I'm very proud to have it being done in the city of Rochester. So with that, commissioners, back at the table, obviously Warp Speed, this is moving along very rapidly. If you have any questions or comments or a motion to move this along?
I would like to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
I would like to make a motion that we approve this project as is. And I'd also like to thank you, Dennis, for your service for all of our health. I appreciate that.
I hope it works. Yes, who's speaking?
David Gasson.
Hi, David.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
This includes the 12-inch-wide access drive?
Yes, 12-foot wide, wide adjustment.
Did I say inch? Sorry.
So, Mr. Gasson, you supported the motion by the mayor?
Yes, I did.
Okay, any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Gosson?
Yeah.
Clark Martin?
Support.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. For the representatives from Par, I'd say that we are very proud to house you in our city and truly proud to have this product being produced here. So we wish you Godspeed and all the best with this thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. I would like to state that Dean did communicate with Blaine that he is not going to be in attendance. I just want to let the record show that.
Who is that?
Dean will not be.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Sienna.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item is number six. This is a conditional, consideration of a conditional rezoning request located at 443 Wesley. Vidia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have conducted a preliminary review of a request from Mr. Knickerbocker of Howard and Howard Attorneys.
A bit louder again, if you could.
Okay, let me just find the plan so that I can share the screen with you. Just give me one minute, please, while I scroll to the site. My volume is set at 99. I hope you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We have reviewed a request from Mr. Knickerbocker of Howard and Howard Attorneys to conditionally rezone a parcel of land from RM1 Multiple Family Residential to O2, which is Restricted Office District. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of the It's located on the southwest corner of West University and Wesley. So this, this site is, I'm going to see if I can repeat it.
Vidia, I'm sorry. If you go to the last page of the packet, it's the bigger site plan. If that'll help you. It's literally the last page.
Ah, perfect. Thank you, Sienna.
Sienna, you're on top of this stuff, man. I like that.
I'll reduce the size of it. Okay, this is the smallest that we go. Okay, the subject site is, as I mentioned, on the southwest corner of West University and Wesley and has an area of .16 acres. The site is occupied by an existing dwelling and there is a detached garage over here. The applicant proposes to use the existing dwelling as an office for administrative uses, which is currently not permitted in the RM1 district, but it is permitted in the O2 Restricted Office District. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act permits conditions to be attached to a rezoning at the request of an applicant. Under this approach, the use of the land would be limited by the conditions of the rezoning and in this case, the terms offered by the applicant. So this is a conditional rezoning request. Basically, the applicant will offer up whatever limitations they believe is necessary in order to get approval for the request. And any deviation from the conditions of the approval revets the property back to its original zoning. So per section 3403 of the zoning ordinance, a petition to rezone requires a public hearing. We held by the planning commission on the proposal. You would then make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will then hold a public hearing and take final action at the time. Plan is proposing the demolition of an existing garage. This is the house on the site and the garage. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing detached garage and create a parking lot, which is required for the proposed office use. Based on the ordinance standards, the size of the house, our ordinance is based on gross square footage. The amount of parking spaces required for this site would be eight. Now, even with their best measure and providing a handicap accessible space, a maximum number of spaces that can be accommodated on the site is seven. The applicant has submitted the site plan and they have also submitted a conditional rezoning agreement which offers to limit use of the building to low-traffic uses only. O2, where currently in our zoning ordinance, there are two office districts, O1 and O2. O1 is the more intensive district, which allows for medical offices and similar high-traffic uses. O2 is restricted, which is the lower-intensity office, basically, realtor, architect, law offices, typical offices that don't receive as much traffic. So the condition being offered by the applicant is this will be limited to low-intensity uses in the O2 district. O2 has pretty much all low-intensity uses only. So applicant is offering that. And in their site plan calculations, the applicant also quantifies the common use areas within the existing dwelling, which are shared spaces for the office use and don't require their own parking. For example, if it's an office, you have common kitchen area, you have a common conference room area. So it doesn't, for the applicant, it won't require its own parking spaces. It is going to be used by the people who are already being given parking for other portions within the building. If the conditional rezoning is approved, the applicant will then require company for you for site plan approval, at which time we will review items related to landscaping, screening, and other site design items. So at this time, this is before you for a preliminary hearing. And if you are willing to accept the proposal, you would set it for a public hearing at the next available meeting so that you can act and make a recommendation on conditional rezoning request. I would be happy to answer any questions you have. I just want to clarify that at this time, you're not reviewing any of the site plan elements. You're strictly looking at it as a rezoning from RM1 to O2 Restricted Office.
Would it have come back or also then be considered for site plan approval? Once it's rezoned?
Yes, it will have to come back. We had a similar situation up on University for a dental office. They rezoned it from O2 to O1 and once the conditional rezoning was done, they came back before you for site plan approval.
So the rezoning, we would recommend the city council would have to approve?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the planner?
I have a question.
Yes, who's speaking?
Go ahead.
David, was that you, I think?
Hey, I can't wait. Thank you.
Go ahead, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, could the planner add more definition to the approach for the conference room not being used as area to determine parking requirement? Particularly in another, if someone were building an office building, would they be able to exclude such spaces as a conference room or others similar to reduce their required parking?
In response to that question, the answer is no. If somebody is building an office building, we would calculate parking based on the gross square footage only. The reason I mentioned the applicant providing the distinction over here is they are asking for a conditional rezoning. Basically, they are trying to demonstrate to you that the seven parking spaces will meet will meet the needs of the used space of the building. And if necessary, the extra square footage that necessitates the need for an eighth space will not be used. So I would ask the applicant to actually provide some additional information in that regard. They are, their justification is seven spaces is enough to meet the needs of this property and that is part of their conditional rezoning request.
Thank you for that. Could I add further, Mr. Chairman, please?
Please do.
How, how would future uses and possibly multiple different tenants be regulated and monitored for compliance with this seven-space prediction at this point?
The building is designed for O2 uses, which is basically any use that goes in here will be subjected to a parking standard of one space for every 300 square feet of gross floor area. So as long as any tenant changes still is within the realm of the uses permitted in the O2 district, their parking requirements will not change at all. It might be a lawyer's office to start with. Tomorrow, it might be a real estate office or it might be a secretarial office. As long as it is within the realm of the same uses, the parking requirement will not change for it and we will not regulate the use that goes in.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think Sarah wanted to go first.
Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, I wasn't sure if this was going to be one office space for a particular A business or if this is a shared kind of, you know, you rent spaces and how many offices would be in here? It just wasn't very clear.
Would you?
I would ask the applicant to answer that, Mr. Knickerbocker, if you are there.
Sure, I am actually here with Reese Sarah, the owner, who will let you know his plans at present, which includes him occupying.
Sure, so I've owned this house since I identified it for purchase in December of 17. And I planned to do this, I had a law practice here in Rochester at that time, which I sold in 2018. And I own some other businesses. I recently sold one of those businesses, started a new law firm on September 1st. And I plan to occupy about 75% of the space to start. I have an accountant and a mortgage broker who I work with frequently and they're going to occupy the remaining offices. But our plan is just to have six people in the building, of which primarily there would only be three on a daily basis. So the majority of the space would be occupied by myself.
But I think in that, in, maybe to finish off the question, it would be uses like that, I don't believe Mr. Sarah has designs to gut the inside and create maximum office space in the areas
Absolutely not.
that are necessary.
Yeah.
And in addition, and I guess this would be reviewed at a later time, although if we can share the screen, I could show you. It is laid out like a house. It has a wide hallway entrance and a rather sweeping stairway and that I believe are included in the square footage as well as a large kitchen. And, uh, that I believe are included in the square footage as well as a large kitchen. So even setting aside the dining room, um, as a conference room to be shared, I believe we are, it was seven point seven spaces was the calculation based on square footage. Um, and, uh, so we were like two hundred and, uh, two hundred, just over two hundred square feet that pushed us to the, to the next parking space. And actually, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have been that much actually if I, I didn't do the calculation, but if we stayed below seven point five, I believe we would default to seven spaces, but Vidya can correct me if I'm wrong. So to get from seven point seven spaces to seven point five is, isn't even as much as we're proposing space-wise. And I think Mr. Sarah's, uh, uses are, uh, given that the design of the house and maybe address this later, the outside of the house as it stands today will look this, virtually, y- you wouldn't know anything was changing on the inside, other than the garage is gone, because it has an existing six-foot fence in the whole back of the house, and that would stay the same, and you would basically screen all the cars, um, that are there. Uh, and from the outside, you wouldn't know that anything had changed inside this house. Um, but we can talk about that later, uh, if need be. Could you confirm, um, I'm sorry, Vidya, that that's correct? That we were at about seven point seven and any seven point five or lower would default to seven?
Typically, the way the parking calculations are written is one per three hundred square feet of gross square area or fraction thereof. So if your parking requirement is seven point four spaces, the required parking becomes seven. If it's seven point five or higher, it automatically goes to the higher number, it goes to.
Okay, can I, may I talk about the use of this interior space for offices? I think that.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So currently, right now, there is one large living room. There's a very large entryway, because this is a hundred-year-old house. That is, in twenty twenty-one, it'll be a hundred. It's ninety-nine now. And there is a dining, a formal dining room, and there's a kitchen and a bathroom on the first floor. Um, at, at the next phase of this project, I propose to build an ADA accessible, uh, bathroom, maintain the existing kitchen, and, um, to put two doors on the conference or on the dining room to convert it into a conference room, and then take the living room and make it into two offices. So on the first floor, I propose to have two offices only. On the upstairs, this is an American four-square home. And there are four, uh, bedrooms on the top floor with a common hallway in the middle of the floor and a bathroom at the end of the hall. And I propose to make those four bedrooms into four separate offices. They're already ready to go, to be honest with you. You just have to change the locks.
Would these be for employees or associates or for rent?
No, for employees and associates primarily.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and, you know, I, of course, I have no problem with the law firm being there, but you know, the ordinance says eight. And every single person who ever builds a building could come up with these same kind of reasons to have seven. You know, every, well, I'm not gonna use this, and I'm not gonna use that. And I, I'm not saying you're not, but it's like, to me, it's supposed to be eight, it should be eight.
I understand.
Good comment.
I, that's a very good comment, and I, I can, I can appreciate that. Um, I would say this, though, given the, the architecture of the home and how it's framed, um, and how it's positioned inside, it would be financially impractical to renovate it to an extent to where you get maximum square footage. It will be more of a premium, low-density office space. Um, just by, just by the natural configuration of how the home was, home was built. And I want to maintain that character. The home has beautiful plaster ceilings. It's got original hardwood floors. It's got a restored staircase. I bought it from an architect. Um, who, from a real estate developer who had an architect for his son. And it's, it's beautiful inside. I don't want to change any of that aesthetic. And I don't think anybody that would purchase it from me would want to undergo the significant expense to tear all of that out. If they did, they would knock down the home in its entirety. That's how you'd have to do it. That would be the only financially practical way to do that. And then they would go before the board or, or the, uh, the city with a completely new proposal like that.
Mr. Chairman?
Who is next?
Uh, that would be me, Nick. So.
Yeah, Nick, go ahead.
I'm, I'm gonna be very passionate about this. I'll try not to raise my voice. I met Mr. Sarah a couple of years ago. I told him, I've been in this business forty-two years as a city planner. I told him, we would unequivocally not support this request for the following reason. We talked about logical, first of all, the first test is, is the existing zoning appropriate? So RM zoning is on the property, the entire block, which allows for single-family residents. All the homes on that block going west are single-family homes. Across the street, and I would understand when I first met him that why he would think maybe this corner could be like the corner where the Rainbow Connection is, which is zoned O two, which would seem like logically, if you put one side of the street O two, you could do it on the second s- side. But the problem is, the Rainbow Connection bought two large lots. They have excess parking from what, excess land so that they could create more parking. What they did, though, by creating that, turning that home into an office building, was create a lot of impervious area. This planning commission has been talking about, why would we want to put more pavement down when we don't need to? And when you, when he would convert this to an office building, the whole backyard goes to impervious. Where are we gonna take the water? Number one, you're losing the residential character. You haven't beat the test of the existing home that is there is not appropriate. The future land use plan was for two-family residential. It does not call for office at all. So we'd be going against everything that we stand for to do this. On top of that, COVID's made this more visible, but obviously, there's a lot of office space vacant right now. Why would we create a situation where rezoning land for someone to use for office space when we have vacant office space in town? Number two, he's not committed to taking the whole building. He says there could be six people in the building, probably three at any given time. But if you're a financial planner, or you're a real estate broker, or a title company, a mortgage company, like he said, they have to bring in clients. This is, there is no extra parking anywhere within two blocks, three blocks for anybody to share. The overflow parking would then go into the neighborhood. This is an inappropriate ask to go to office. Our future land use plan, our existing land use plan does not support it. I let him know that initially. I respect his ability to make this request. And we don't know if he has different tenants in the building, if an elevator has to go in, because they're different companies. One company, both floors the same, not elevator. He'd have to meet with the building official to see if different clients need elevators to get to that second floor. By having to make the home ADA accessible for the office, he's going to put a ramp on there. If it stayed a home, most likely that would never happen. And, and then, and on top of that, you're gonna hear from the residents in the area that will, um, come out at a public hearing if so. I just want to let you know where staff stands on this. I try to work with them. I understand his request, and I appreciate the process that he has achieved to do this, but that's how staff.
Nick, the, uh, immediately to the west is Rainbow Connection?
That's, uh, to the east. Across the street, other side of Wesley.
Okay, okay, I got it. So, uh, just to reiterate what I heard, from Wesley to the west, what's the next street west?
Wilcox.
Everything in that strip?
I'm sorry, west, no, west is Castel. East is Wilcox.
Everything in that contiguous strip is single-family?
That is correct. The driveway's out on the.
It's multifamily.
Multi.
It's all multifamily, but it's you, land use is single-family.
This is in a, uh, I'm sure it's very old, but a platted subdivision?
Correct.
Are there restrictions? Has anyone reviewed the restrictions that may preclude any of this happening anyway?
Unless he found that in his title work, I, I'm not aware of that.
Could someone check that for us before we proceed?
You can do that.
I mean, it may be precluded by zoning restriction or, uh, deed restriction.
I, I would think not only because the Rainbow Connection got to actually rezone to office O two and convert, and they're in the same plat, so I would think that would, but we certainly could.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other question that I can ask.
David, please.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Nick, for your, your overview there. You answered a couple of my questions regarding surrounding zoning and, um, use, as well as brought up the use conversion, building department factor that might come into play. But the, the last question I had that didn't get covered, and maybe it's in the request, but I didn't see it, is the applicant willing to put or has he stated a condition of hours of use? Um, particularly at the end of the day, is it stated five PM, six PM, or et cetera?
I can respond to that if that's all right.
Please do.
I mean, yes, we would be willing to restrict to typical business hours, which would be, you know, typically no later. We're here a little later today, obviously, for this, but typical use to no later than six o'clock and, you know, that's not a problem at all. If I can also elaborate on some of the things Mr. Banda said, um, and add a little color. I have spoken to the neighbors to the west, and they approved this project. There's an alley to the south separating, um, my house from the rest, rest of the residential neighborhood. So physically, there is a separation of an alleyway between the houses to the south. I, I, I'm an attorney. I know you guys will investigate it yourself, but there is no restrictions on this parcel. Um, and I know that your investigation will also find that. And to the north, there are approximately eight houses that were converted to office O two in the same fashion, though probably not through the same process, um, as what I'm proposing here today. And in terms of the residential character of the home, um, we intend to preserve it one hundred percent. I intend to display the historic sign in exactly the same fashion that it's displayed right now. I've already repainted the home and stripped it down to its original cedar and had it painted white. And that is exactly the same character, and I'd be willing to agree to that restriction in the agreement that the historical character of the home be maintained. Um, because it's important to me, and that's why I bought it. I didn't buy it to tear it down and turn it into a monolithic commercial building.
And, and I, I would, this is, uh, Brad Nickerbock, um, just as it relates to the, as it relates to the master plan, um, y- y- you know, for, for what it's worth, um, you know, the master plan shows the Rainbow Connection as office in two thousand fourteen, because it had already been changed. But it shows it as two-family residential in two thousand twenty-five. Um, I'm not sure why that is, but, uh, you know, clearly, that's unlikely to happen. And with a multi, with a multifamily designation, whether it's practical to have it here or not, and I understand there are parking conditions, but you could literally have five cars for a family renting this place or, or, or owning this place, given how every kid with a driver's license has a car these days. So, uh, I think it's, it's also, um, really important to, and I don't know if I can share the screen. I'm gonna try and, and, and show some, um, some pictures of the house that we're talking about. Can you see that picture?
No, are they the ones in the package?
No, they're additional, but.
It didn't come on, uh, Brett.
Sienna has to give you, um, she's changed the privacy thing.
Okay, can, can that be done quickly, or is that something that you had?
No, it's real quick. She can do it quick.
Yeah.
Right? Are you running, who, are you running this?
He should be able to share his screen on his own.
Because it's functionally, it looks like I am sharing my screen, but, um.
Adam, you may have the wrong screen highlighted.
Well, I have.
It's not on our screen.
This picture's not showing up?
No.
No. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Christian, please.
Um, Mr. Nickerbocker, in the, uh, letters that we've got here in the packet dated September sixteenth, two thousand twenty, there are some correspondence in support of the project, but they're dated back in, uh, two thousand eighteen. Is there anything that would be more recent to that, or is that something that would be presented later on down the road or from adjacent property owners who would be, you know, have a much more vested interest versus the chop house that has a letter in here?
Sure, I think that Mr. Sarah can, tell me I'm wrong, but he would re-up those. We, he and I talked about that, that they're, you know, they're a little dated when he started this project. But as he's out and about in the community, he stays in touch with the folks, and he's, I think they're all pretty much still on board, and he may have left a few out of there.
I did.
Um, which we, we will get, and we would refresh those at the next, at the next step, but we, let me go back. I don't know if I can, Sienna, I don't know if there's anything that can be done here, but, um, with me to share.
I even made you a co-host. If you click the share screen, you just have to click on the appropriate screen when you, when it's like, lights up to share.
Can you see that?
Yeah, now we got it.
All right, so the back of this house has a six-foot completely permitted fence. And this garage is going to go, and there'll be an opening to go to the back, but, uh, the fence would then be continued along this alley. Um, and hopefully I won't, um, let me get back to the fence. Uh, this is, this is the side of the back in the alley. On the, the right side is the garage. It would go away, and it would be replaced with the fence. Would be a six-foot, um, solid fence. You would not see these cars, uh, for the most part. And, and the backyard would look basically like it looks now. It's just that it has a garage. But from the alleyway and from the street, all you see is one side of the garage. It's one-dimensional from the street, and, and it's gonna look that way, and nothing really is going to change. So this will all stay the same. Part of the house would stay the same. You're, you're literally not going to see any real differential, and, and I did have some pictures of the inside that some of these areas, but, um, I guess that's for later.
This shows the common area, though.
Well, right.
Yeah, can you?
Yeah, it would, it would show the, um.
If you go back to the photo?
I'm trying. Where did that one come from? Uh, where is that? There, sorry. So this, and, and, but I don't want to jump around. I mean, I was talking about the outside with the backyard is basically a rectangular box of fence. And you can't see, and it's, it's permitted. And you can't see the other side of this. As far as the, the impervious surfaces go, while, you know, we understand the desire to have, to have green space, nobody's gonna benefit from grass in this backyard from a visual standpoint, because they can't see it. From a hydrological, uh, stormwater detention standpoint, the water and the designs are actually on the drawings are going to be captured with large pipes that would then have a throttle-down trickle-out, uh, stormwater detention dissipation uh, in the event of a large, uh, large rain. Uh, Jim Sharp, I believe, has actually designed some of these for, uh, businesses in Rochester previously, and it's been acceptable. So it, this isn't, uh, th- th- there's literally stormwater detention on site, underground, not, not, you know, nothing that anybody would see, but it is being designed, and the extra money would be spent to capture the stormwater uh, from the impervious surfaces that would be added. Um, so from a, from a, uh, neighborhood standpoint, uh, the only thing I think this, that really would look significantly different about this house is if everybody goes home at six o'clock and the lights are off. That would be looked different, but otherwise, it's going to look the same. The house superstructure will look the same on the outside, and it will not change. That's one of the conditions that we've, we've listed. It's going to look just like it looks in these photos. Um, and it's a historic home. Um, everything that's being done to the outside is done behind the fence, basically.
Which are mainly a parking lot and some ADA modifications. And if you can go back to the yellow, the yellow drawing that you just had, this illustrates, I had an architect from Rochester, um, do this. And this illustrates where the common areas are. Um, on the, on the first floor there, which is on the right, that encloses the, the dining room and the, and the kitchen and the bathroom. And there, out to Wesley there, that's the door, and you can see there's a big hallway there. So we would have to decimate the entire structure, the first floor, you know, to really add a lot more offices. The big rectangular, uh, white space on the right there, um, is what I would propose to make two offices. And the yellow space to the right of that is a, is like a two-seasons room.
It's a, it's an unheated.
Yeah, unheated porch, it's all windows and it's unusable, it has to be sealed off in the winter.
Vidya, I, we're this to be rezoned and I'm not meaning to get ahead of us here. That creates a different zoning district next to single family to the south. Is a, is a fence or a wall required at that point?
I'll have to check the ordinance, but yes, if this is an office district that our single family residential. The ordinance does have some provision when it is separated by an alley, et cetera. The relevant sections of the ordinance were provided to the applicant for itself. So, and they did indicate that whatever the ordinance requirements are with regard to screening, fencing or landscaping.
Okay.
Yes, and we did, yeah, and thank you Vidya, yes, she did cite me to it and you have discretion in that regard. But I believe the original intention was to put up what I believe is called for for the transition between the zoning codes was a forty or thirty-two inch, four and a half foot high brick wall. Which for the neighbor's perspective, Mr. Sarah is willing to do that. But from the neighbor's perspective, that just gives you a view of all these cars. You just don't get to see the feet when people walk in. And, and four and a half feet is significantly different than six. And when it comes to a car height. So he's willing to do both and we put that in our transmittal or our statement letter. We're also willing to look at vegetation as an alternative to the fence. But it's not nearly going to screen it as well as it is screened right now. But that is also something that Mr. Sarah is willing to do that in lieu of the fence.
Other commissioners, jump in here if you would.
Mr. Chairman, can I throw one more thing? Again, I, I didn't think we were going to talk about site plan. But since you already started that discussion, the petitioner, when Vidya looks at the site plan, she will get the two easterly parking spaces that are not legal. You have to have a five foot backup spot to get out of there. So that's less parking spaces that legally you get in that parking lot. Now they're down to five, so Vidya, you want to pull the site plan up? I know you didn't review this as a site plan, but when you do, you will note that the two easterly spaces can't just have a flat, how can you get out of them? So just. You should look at it.
Yeah.
They've got five feet backup. See the last two?
Yeah.
Yeah, those two you can't get out of. Or, so, those aren't even legal spaces. And we're very snikety about that when we get the site plan.
Mr. Lord, did you have something, please?
I do, a couple, a lot's been brought up tonight, that questions that I had, particularly relating to how this falls with the master plan, the requested zoning, how it falls with the master plan, but. Question I have, you know, I guess what I'm accustomed to seeing with conditional rezonings is that there are conditions placed on the application that further restricts what could be done by way of just traditional rezoning. If it was just rezoned to O2. A conditional rezoning, it would seem to me would have further restrictions to it. I'm not seeing the further restrictions. In fact, there's a parking variance that's baked into the application as opposed to you know, just rezoning with a separate parking variance application. So it looks like they're trying to bake that all into one. I do see, and maybe this is a question for Vidya, I see a comment in the letter about restricting uses to low traffic uses, but I don't. Maybe I need a little explanation on what that is and how that's different than what's in the O2 district. You know, as is, as a permitted use. What are we further restricting on this application?
When I say low traffic uses, I would be comparing all the different types of office uses to uses that would be permitted in O1 versus O2. In the O2, whatever is permitted, which one of those would be considered as higher intensity, more graphic generating than the lower? That is the analysis that would accompany my full review letter. This is a preliminary hearing, so at this time I did not go into the detailed analysis or like Nick said. I did not look at any of the detailed site plan elements. This is merely the applicant trying to explore the possibility of doing an office use. So those kind of analysis will be done at the time. If you should choose to proceed and place this for consideration of conditional, it will be reviewed.
Okay, and thank you for that. I guess a follow-up to that would be I've also seen site plans be placed as a condition of a rezoning. And I want to be careful that we're not doing that with this one. Whereby the conditional rezoning is not only approving the rezoning, but, but the site plan to go along with it. I've seen that in the past and I want to make sure that that's not what we're doing here.
I think the key about a conditional rezoning is the city does not set for the conditions. The applicant proposes the conditions themselves, they offer it out. But the city does have the prerogative to reject some of the conditions that are being offered if you don't find them acceptable. So the key would be to review the conditional agreement that they have proposed and the restrictions or whatever limitations they are willing to propose. You could say that something is not acceptable to you. If their conditional agreement, it does include the parking deviation of seven instead of eight. They are tying it to the office use of the property, but then that is up to the planning commission. Should you choose not to accept that as part of the conditional rezoning request? It can be done this way too, but once again, it's a condition and you'll have to accept that as a condition. If not, like you said, that would be a variance.
May I respond to Mr. Lord? I'll be quick here. I think the main condition being being proposed is that the exterior, if you just rezoned it to O2 with no conditions. There's only way to get tear down the house and put up a ugly two-story rectangular office building. The restriction is, the condition is no, we cannot, we will retain the full residential and historic look of this house as a condition to zoning. And the other, the other question you would ask about uses. You know, we did put in our cover transmitter letter, we're open to discuss uses to eliminate certain uses that are deemed offensive or high traffic, but the zoning ordinances between O1 and O2 seem to do that. I heard a comment that perhaps mortgage brokers have people in and out, you know. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the case these days. They maintain an office space in some respects, but most independent mortgage brokers that have an office. They close these loans through other banks at title companies that people don't really come in and out all that much in my experience and I do do some of this work. But setting that aside, if there is some permitted use within this zoning that anyone feels is a high traffic or at the high end of the low traffic list. We're willing to talk about limiting that. Mr. Sarah's main objective is to get his, you know, his law practice in there. You know, and a CPA doesn't have, you know, one person, if it's a CPA, wouldn't, there's only have five customers.
The other thing I'd like to mention too is the other restriction that's really key is that we're limiting the square footage. So we're limiting the use of the property to a minimal or a maximum amount of square foot.
Right, and that goes with the request for the less, for the seven spaces. This is eight. And, but I do think you know, our limitations may look like there aren't that many, but the key is that the residential nature of this home would stay. And I said it earlier and I'm not trying to be flippant about it, but you wouldn't know anything changed based on what's being proposed versus what's there now. Which has this large fence that, with a garage that basically encapsulates the entire backyard of this building. So if it stayed, if you don't like the look of that, it's not going to change even if you turn down this request. It's going, the fence is there and as I understand it's legally permitted and we were proposing to either keep that fence, which would be a great screening device, or if it's something that is necessary, we would switch it out for green and green screening and perhaps even the brick wall that would, by the zoning ordinance, as I understand, would be four and a half feet high.
So commissioners, if I could jump in here and summarize, this is set for preliminary discussion only tonight, no decisions to be made. I think with the contributions from the staff and the planner. It's pretty clear that this has a long way to go before it's ready for any kind of consideration at a public hearing. We're not saying yes, not saying no, but I think the petitioners heard pretty loud and clear what what the positions are of the administration and the planners. I would suggest, excuse me. I would suggest that this not be set for a public hearing. And that we put this off until a revised plan comes forward for us to consider at another time.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Chairman, and I had a couple of comments if it's time to make them.
Please do.
If it does come back with the applicant, if that's the process that just goes and he comes back with some refinement addressing these comments we've made tonight. I'd like to see the calculations for parking based on the building, just as we would in any other situation, some creative exclusion of common use or dedicated non-functioning as an office space as a comparison. But if that is the route that he's going to take in order to get this conditional rezoning, I would like to see very strict measures on how the restriction occurs and how it's monitored throughout the life of the use if it does go forward. I have, I see a very, a very difficult path in doing that, but that's up to the applicant and that would be my request, see that kind of data or plan. And I'll just state my opinion here that although I respect any landowner's right to, you know, seek better and higher use for their property and method that is you can, I don't see this site supporting the use of a office function purely because I don't think that we're adding parking, we're adding traffic onto a sidewalk that's residential right now. And I don't see the benefit to the neighborhood. And I don't, I don't see a unique calculation to satisfy parking lesser than any other building that we would see as being something we can defend, justify and use in the future on hypothetical other sites. I don't think that's a course for us to take. That's just my opinion right now. I'm open, but I have a strong opinion that it's not something that we can find harmony for this use in the neighborhood in that particular spot.
Other commissioners?
Chairman, if I might, we know, just so the petitioner knows. We are in the throes of a master plan revision. This is change, this is a significant ask to change the future land use plan. Wouldn't it be appropriate as we go through public hearings and charrettes with the public to talk about different land uses other than what is presently on the existing zoning map and the future zoning map, wouldn't it be appropriate to take this up as part of the master plan revision? It's a year out probably by the time we get done, but why would we jump into something on its own just because somebody asked us to when we are actually looking at the entire city? The appropriateness now with a new world, a new day of what our demands are for different land uses like off. I would think that we would want to make sure that people get a fair shot at this overall as we look at our future land use patterns for this.
So Mr. Sarah, Mr. Nickerbocker, we're here almost always twice a month. We'd ask you to react in terms of what you've heard here tonight and if you're prepared to come back again, we're more than willing to listen.
Okay, I have one question if I may then, if you could just clarify. I've already paid, I did, I did parking calculations, they're included on the print that was attached to the last page. So they're calculated at 2100 square feet.
Actually, 2309.
Twenty-three eighty-nine, yeah, dictates eight, but I have, I've done interior architectures that show the common area, which is the picture we showed you in yellow. I could resubmit that and show you seven spaces which you already have right now. I just, I received a lot of mixed messages and I'm at a struggle. I did the underwater, I did the underground detention. That was a concern when I met with Nick Banda. We've done the screening, which meets or even exceeds what the code requires in terms of height. I'm already agreeing to preserve the residential and historic character of the home. You know, what more can I do? Tell me now, what more should I do to be more successful at the next meeting?
If I can help you, that you have two spaces that don't count, so you have five spaces. Because we didn't get a chance to review the site plan because we haven't yet. And you can't just, the commissioners have said this. You can't just change the rules, how we calculate parsing, parking. We calculate on gross square feet, I was very clear with you about that a year and a half ago. Why would you think you could change that? Because everybody, like Commissioner Gasset, everybody else in the city then will do that. We get asked that every time somebody wants to occupy a space. Can I just use the usable square feet? Some cities. Actually, one where I came from, we did calculate usable. Then the parking count is a higher number, so. We have incorporated for ever since we've had a zoning ordinance, this city is going by gross square feet and never modified from that. It's a fair number. We've never had a problem with it before and for you to ask for that to be changed to get a zoning that's not appropriate, I don't know why you're asking us that.
Nick, do you know if any prior owner, it was mentioned that an attorney had a, or a developer had a son was an architect. Did any prior owner of this property make this request? None of us have been here long enough.
Not my 11 years.
So just something that wasn't mentioned was in a brief discussion with, I think, with Vidya. We had asked the question, in essence, the word variance hasn't been mentioned in this, in this meeting. But in essence, the, the parking space reduction to seven is in essence a variance. And the question became, did we need to go in front of the ZBA for variance or could it be part of this hearing as part of a conditional rezoning where we restrict space in the home as common space? Et cetera, as we've discussed, and it's my understanding that this body can approve without going through two steps of a zoning variance. Can approve seven spaces as part of this series of meetings.
As a conditional rezoning?
Yes, and if that's not correct, then I guess I would like to, and it doesn't, no one has to answer it now because I don't sure anybody can. But if that's not correct. And I, I don't know if city attorney had actually looked at that, but I think it was Jeff's thought that was correct, so. So the word variance hasn't been used, but in essence that's why we're making this request as part of an overall package of a conditional rezoning. And rather than leaving out the whole discussion of parking and saying that approve it's subject to some other body giving us that approval. So I didn't want that to, you know, we're not being flippant and cocky here about the way we're, the way we approached it, that was just our understanding, that's the way we proceeded. And I will say as it relates to, you know, as it relates to this parking issue. Yes, if it was, if somebody was building on office building and saying, I'm going to build a 2300 square foot office building and I'm going to, you know, limit some space, da-da-da-da. Maximize, they're going to maximize the, the stuff people in offices and all that, which we've discussed. This is a historic building, it just doesn't apply in this case. This is, you're not going to walk, you wouldn't walk into this home and see a bunch of doors with multiple 10 by 10 offices. It's, so there's the practical limitation of the actual superstructure of this house versus somebody saying, I want to build a 2300 square foot office building, but I can only get seven spaces, I'll just agree to not use some space. In this case, it's de facto wasted space because of the nature of the building. It just is. And that's what, and that's what we're trying to get across. I understand we'll move to the next session, but that was, that was the impetus for the you know, actual practical usable space that would be leased and bodies that would be sitting in this building.
Vidya?
I just wanted to provide some clarification.
I, I just wanted to provide some clarification. Yes, we, myself and Attorney Kraut did have a conference meeting with Mr. Knickerbocker and he did discuss the parking issue and yes, legally, they could offer the argument that they are offering so that you can consider parking as part of the conditional rezoning. But however, as Mr. Law raised the question, you do not want to consider it as part of the conditional rezoning. Don't have to, and then they will have to seek a variance, but they can offer and suggested that part. The approach they are taking is we believe seven spaces are enough and we will restrict the use of the building to the square footage required for seven spaces. That's the argument they are offering and that's what they have brought before you tonight. That's the preliminary request, but based upon what the board, what the planning commission is saying, that is not an approach you're willing to entertain. You would rather they comply with the parking. Or if the parking does not meet the requirement, they have to go and get a variance policy. So there are two aspects for it. This approach that they have taken can also be legally considered based upon Attorney Kraut and my reading, but you're not willing to entertain it, you'll just have to go back to traditional route of approval.
So thank you again for coming in for the presentation. I hope we were able to help clarify the position of the city and help you with what your next steps might be.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We will sharpen our pencil. Thanks.
All right, thank you. The next item is number seven, discussion on newly formed future land use map slash zoning classifications. Vidya, is that yours?
No, it is not mine. It is your new consultants.
Yeah, so actually, we don't, we're not bringing them in to have to pay them to do this, so it's me.
Oh, not again.
I apologize, but this is part of my job. So we've run into a little bit of snag, not anticipated, but it's a snag with our consultants, Beckett and Rader, as they try to move forward with the process of evaluating and starting the formal process of our next master plan. We told them in our RFP and in our interviews that we had a unique situation going here that what presently is on our books for zoning in the city of Rochester, zoning classifications that have been here for 50 years. We have a series of, I believe, 17 new zoning classifications that prior planning commissioners have supported and passed on to city council to adopt those districts and then adopt the actual zoning map, which would make those districts real. And then the next step with the, our former, or our planners at the time, McKenna for the master plan, then turn those into real zoning classifications. So you're all aware of, I've probably said this more than once, that were hung up at city council, and Mayor can help me here, that the city council did not feel that they wanted to, at the last time we talked about this, adopt those districts which would adopt zoning map. Previous council members many years ago didn't want to go one district at a time, they wanted it all done at once. The new council that was sat 10 years, two years ago did not understand the background of it all and we got hung up on the last four districts and we never adopted them.
These like the edge districts and those sorts of.
Yep, all, yes, so we turned, we used to just have B1, B1, CBD, O1, O2, RM12, all those, and now we have a ton of different ones, edge districts, river valleys. We don't have to have research project, we have office technology, light manufact, so we have all those districts, but none of them are valid at this point. The planners don't know where, what to compare to. So this is where the discussion went. This planning commission I'm looking at on my screen right here, a lot of you have never even seen any of these zoning classifications. Our city council, as the mayor knows, three or four councilpersons, three at least that have never seen the classifications to their fruition. We would like to know, would the planning commission like to revisit in short fashion the existing zoning classifications, and that wouldn't come from Beckett and Rader. Vidya and her folks know those districts better than anybody. They're still our city planners. And make that presentation to confirm that this planning commission would recommend to this city council those same classifications. Or when we start going through them, do some, do enough people feel like the existing zoning is fine with a few tweaks and we don't go that route. It's going to save, it's going to cost us a lot of money for Beckett and Rader to start from scratch. And that's not what we planned out in the, the master plan, so we're kind of looking for some guidance, Mr. Chairman, how this, would you like to?
Could you do a presentation that would sort of summarize all that work we did the last few years? In terms of where you wanted us to go, the direction you wanted us to go?
So if, if I understand Nick correctly, would like me to just present the districts that I had brought before you that the planning commission had recommended. There were several districts that were adopted by city council. It was River Valley, downtown Edge 1, downtown Edge 2, transition districts, mixed use 1, 2. All those were, and Limos, like manufacturing, industrial, office service district. All those districts were already adopted even by council. They are not really in place because the zoning map was not adopted, so at this point of time, I'm, I'm not sure, because when the discussion went, the planning commission, what I thought, you wanted to revisit some of those districts because you weren't sure you were happy with, because the districts we proposed were based on the 2014 master plan. Lot has changed in six years and it was my understanding the planning commission wanted to revisit some of the areas where we had these new districts planned, so you just want me to tell you, show you maps of each one of the districts and tell you what the district basically was allowing for, and then you will decide what you want to do? I'm a little confused where, what you want.
I have a question. Because, okay, what's this zoning map that we have right now on our website? Is that the one that's not adopted?
That is the one that is adopted and it's old one. We don't, the new one doesn't exist, those districts don't exist yet.
Okay, so yeah, we've never seen it then.
Correct. And Mr. Mayor, maybe, how do you feel about that? He would know better than anybody here.
Well, I don't know if I know better than anybody. Yeah, I, I mean, I think I, I think the city, you know, my sense of the city council, that's why I like, I like that term when I don't speaking for the city council, but my sense of the city council, there, there was some confusion on, you know, a lot of that, there's some new council people and stuff, so I, I guess to have the planning commission maybe give a summary to give that to council, I think there's benefit to that.
Like a jumping off spot here.
Yeah.
I agree.
Because really unless you're sitting on the planning commission and kind of involved in it, especially for newer council, I mean, it's, it's you know, it's complicated stuff, so I think there was just, you know, there was a feeling that you know, the presentation wasn't, you know, the, the information wasn't presented properly or there was confusion on what exactly we're doing. All of a sudden, there was a time constraint to do it, so I think people are like, whoa, we're not going to pass this until we kind of get into it more. So to, in my perspective, having this group give, give a recommendation, presentation dash recommendation would be valuable.
Okay.
So that's.
And I would hope for that outcome too, Mr. Chairman.
You know.
So Vidya, could you prepare that for some future meeting here and work with Nick and?
Sure, so, so Nick, to understand you correctly, you just want me to summarize each of the districts that we have gotten so far?
If, if you could bring us up to speed on the existing districts and then why we went through that effort to break it down even further. The edge districts, et cetera, et cetera. What was the logic for doing that?
I'll put together a PowerPoint. I think that's the best way to do it. I will show you a map of that new district created, where it is located, and a brief summary of what that district entails. So it'd be a refresher for you and then you can decide whether the district really is not what you wanted and now you want to revisit.
Right, and, and I guess, I guess what I would like to see is this, this, this board take another look at it or look at it again, or the new people look at it as well and maybe have a new recommendation or the same recommendation. And then that's just something, you know, a basis for the council to say, hey.
Yes, the new planner is going to be the one to take us through the complete master plan process. I think we need a handoff. And then I would like to hear from them professionally that the direction we were going in is appropriate and we go forward from that point.
That's, that's perfectly put because we would bring them to the meeting so they could understand what we're doing and Vidya's team understands about anybody because they created it, so.
So I will just prepare a summary of all the districts. I will not make any recommendation because that is the prerogative of your master plan consultant. They will, they will discuss with the council and the planning commission the appropriateness or if it needs to be changed. I'll provide a summary background of what has been done so far, so they also get it on.
Right, and, and maybe, maybe quietly we can get your recommendation.
Absolutely.
Rightly, on the download.
Thank you. So Nick, is that satisfactory for tonight?
Absolutely, and Vidya, we know this is a different part of a contract, so I understand that, but yes, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sure you will, you know, recognize Vidya's efforts and that firm's efforts in helping us get to this.
I will be billing you for it, Nick.
I know that, I'm ready.
Okay, next item eight is miscellaneous, any miscellaneousness?
I have a miscellaneous item.
Yes, Sienna.
So, I'll use, I'll get Nick to back me up as well. So at the next meeting, hopefully, well, not the next meeting, in November 19th, Chief Financial actually brought their plans and they were supposed to be on the second, November 2nd meeting, but Vidya had a lot of questions for them, so they did submit revised plans to clarify. By Chief Financial, also one of their parcels being in Rochester Hills, we've had a lot of communication with them as far as their planning commission and bringing forth that project to, well, I guess, discussion with you all and Rochester Hills Planning Commission. So we actually were asked if we could have a special planning commission meeting on December 17th. Rochester Hills stated that they would be able to have a quorum at that meeting to discuss Chief Financial at that meeting. I know it has not been brought before you, so it's kind of like premature. However, we want to get that on the books as virtual meetings in, in 2021. And we actually wanted to get this on the books before 2020 was over to simplify the joint meeting in the virtual roller, so.
We'd be holding the public hearing on December 17th?
The public hearing for Chief Financial.
Okay.
That's a question.
Is there a preliminary?
The preliminary will be November 19th as long as Vidya deems their site plan to be much better than it was when it was previously submitted.
Commissioners, any reaction to that?
I have, I have a question for Nick. I, I guess I thought in the last council meeting we signed, we approved an agreement that it was, we, we were going to be the jurisdiction making these decisions. So I guess I'm surprised to hear that we need to have a joint.
Yeah, so, so you're absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor, so what they decided was we are taking the lead on all the building, the plumbing, the, all that good stuff. But because by their ordinance, half of that site is in their town, they have to do site plan approval on their piece. So they thought, what if they do site plan approval? For instance, they require 10-foot wide parking spots. We require nine. So if they prove something that we couldn't approve, it wouldn't make sense, so they, they're, they're trying to be proactive saying, hey, we'll let you guys take the lead, video review it. We will go with her recommendations, but they still have to take it through their site plan. Actually, because it's a bank, they have to do special exception also. If, or they couldn't even build the parking lot on its own, so we couldn't, they, they, maybe it wasn't clear enough, but they still have their own process, even though they're letting us take the lead on the review.
Do they have the authority to approve a project with nine-foot spaces?
They would grant a waiver.
They said they would grant the waiver.
Under their special exception, yes, sir.
I mean, to, to me, again, it's like, they have different rules, we have different rules. Why, why have a meeting with them? Like, you know, we should, you, you can't, we make our own decisions and then have staff work out the details, so I, I mean.
We could do that.
Like.
I think, I think the issue is that it's a formality on their portion. So they kind of have to have the meeting.
Yeah, they can have their own separate public hearing, absolutely, Mayor. We can do our own thing, and ours would be subject to them approving it because there's cross driveway easements, across city lines, there's a lot of legal stuff that's got to get done, but there is nothing making us have a joint meeting. We are just trying to work together.
Well, I mean, and I'm fine with working together, so I don't, I don't mind, I'm just, I'm not, you know, not sure the value of it, some of these big, sometimes, but, you know, whatever.
Well, let us know what you decide, Nick.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Sienna, number 10.
Public comment?
Public comment? So no one is actually on the line.
Upcoming agenda items, number 10.
Yep, so at the next meeting, November 2nd, we will actually have a public hearing for the existing infill development ordinance. I believe Vidya, I'm sorry, Vidya and Julie will be present to go over that. At the last meeting, they, you all asked for illustrations to be involved in that packet of information, so they will come forth with you with that. It has also been published already in the paper, so it will be a public hearing. The next item, there will be consideration of a site plan for the proposed Monty Family project to be located at 210 diversion. I believe they were here a couple of months ago and that would just be a preliminary hearing.
This is the one at the south end of diversion on the end of the hill?
It's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Is it, is that a special, are they looking for special project?
Yes.
It will be a special project.
So that's another one that crosses the city border.
It does. Actually, for them, they're lucky this time, they're not using the little vacant piece of Rochester Hills other than to clear two trees. So the hills has kind of told them that they're not worried about that because nothing physical is on the hills property to kick in.
Explaining that.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that, just so everybody knows, I think that's going to, that is going to be another topic.
I also, I did have the Chief Financial building located on the November 2nd, but that has since been moved to November 19th.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, we found out Vidya wrote us a very detailed memo today that it appears the, I think she worked with Mr. Kraut on this, that the vacation process for the right of way, one on Wilcox and then one on Charles, does not go through the planning commission in this community, it goes straight to the city council. So we had told, told you that we thought we'd have to bring that back, but Vidya's research showed that we can, we'll work with Jeff and then we'll get that to city council for the formal action of vacation of.
We're not looking for work, so we're very happy to hear that. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, I'm going to move on here. The, the approval of the facility for PAR I think is a big deal. And I was just going to encourage you and, and the administration to publicize that, to get it out. I think it's a, it's a real feather in the cap of the city that we're doing, we're doing a fairly significant part for this COVID issue.
And, and that's a great idea, and I think that, and I think there's a, a military general who is going to be in charge of this because the military is getting involved. But I think they're having meetings with our city administration and kind of work out some of the details. And then we are going to have some kind of public public event with them to publicize it, acknowledge them, you know, say that we're happy that you know, they're working on COVID stuff here, so that's a great idea and we want to do that.
Very good, thank you, thank you. Anything else, commissioners? I know you're all dying to go watch the debate.
There's the night footballs on, woo!
That might be, that might be better than the debate. Okay, no other business, this meeting is declared adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.